All right, it is ten o'clock. Let's go ahead and get started with our lovely treasure.
Good morning.
Morning.
So I just have a couple of quick items for you. They're annual items as you have all seen before. The first one is my annual report to the commissioners on the refunds that my office did in two thousand and twenty-two. And that report is being submitted to you per RCW eighty-four sixty-nine oh two oh. Total amount of refunds was three hundred nineteen thousand seven hundred eighty dollars and eighty-three cents in two thousand and twenty-two. There's really no action that you'll need to take other than to accept my report. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Any questions for Lisa? I have just a comment. I thought it was interesting to see all the senior discounts. I think that was, that was good to see.
That, that makes up the bulk of the ones that we do generally, yes.
And we are at our maximum, is that correct?
At the maximum what?
Uh, allowment, allowing of our senior uh exemptions and stuff. A certain amount of money. We raised it some years ago when the state allowed for a certain uh increase that they could make so much. Uh, are we still at the uh maximum allowed amount?
So that changes um every so many years um pursuant to some prescribed form. Well, I believe we're still up forty thousand annual. I haven't heard that it changed in Mason County yet. And then my second item today is the annual treasury request to cancel uncollectible personal property taxes. These are taxes on businesses that are no longer doing business in Mason County. May have filed bankruptcy or the taxes were based on an estimate of value by the assessor's office for which the treasurer has been unable to collect the taxes due to wants of goods or collateral. So that is that totals three thousand four seventy-two seventeen. And that would come before the board for approval at your next meeting.
Alright, sounds good. So will that be on tomorrow's agenda or?
I believe it'll be on your next February agenda. Your first Tuesday in February.
Sounds good. Any questions?
Alright, well, those were to my, my two items for today. So I will let you get on to the rest of your business and I will get back to mine.
Well, have a good day.
Bye.
Alright, let's move on to our sheriff's office.
Morning, commissioners, can you hear me?
We can.
Awesome. So we've got four different things for you today. Do you have any particular order you'd like to go in or uh bad news to best nude or news or vice versa? Or how do you like it?
Let's eat, yeah, let's eat the toad first and whatever you think is the bad news.
Very good. I'll have Chief Hanson jump on there and do his brief first then.
Good morning. How are you guys?
Good, you?
Good. Cold but good. Alright, so last fall, um I briefed the commission on a request uh from healthcare delivery systems to increase the uh, the contract uh rates. And if you remember correctly, the ask from the owner was um nearly double what um the current contract allows or is set for. Uh, right now, uh, we are in contract with healthcare delivery systems for jail inmate a medical care and the contract is good until the end of two thousand and twenty-three. There are, there is a provision in the contract which allows us to reopen the contract bit on request, which is what uh healthcare delivery, delivery systems has asked. And um last fall, when we talked about this with you folks, um we talked about uh Shannon, which is the owner of the company, her uh difficulty she has in trying to hire nurses to work in a correction setting and pay a competitive wage. Um, and, and because of that, she asked for the wholesale uh increase. Uh, I think Commissioner Shutey said at that last briefing that um maybe uh because the increase is like four hundred somewhat thousand bucks, and maybe we can go back and see if she'd be amenable to increase the, just the RN hours. Cause that's really where the problem was, is trying to pay a competitive wage for the RNs. So that's what I did. I went back to talk to the uh owner, Shannon of healthcare delivery systems and asked if she'd be amenable to that, and she said yes. And so the, the, the uh brief you have in front of you and the, in the proposal and is just for RN hours and increasing our an hour from sixty dollars an hour to eighty dollars an hour. That uh annual cost would be about a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars for this year. I talked to Mark Neary about it. I think he's briefed you guys a couple times on it. And um, and there, and just so you also know, there's also been oh, about forty hours worth of nursing coverage that did not get covered in the jail in the last couple of months, three months because there was no RNs to cover the shifts. So, and I, I attribute part of that to this problem. Also, at the last meeting, you guys asked for some comparables. Um, I shared those with Mark. Uh, I compared Grace Harbor, Thurston, Lewis. And I thought there was maybe one more, uh Olympia City Jail, Calitz County. And the, the uh lowest cost healthcare plan with similar service to us was Grace Harbor. And their annual cost is eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand seven hundred fourteen dollars. So um at our current rate of five hundred and thirty, thirty thousand dollars plus the hundred and forty-six, we're still getting a pretty darn good deal on for inmate healthcare services in my mind. Some of those other, some of those other jails are paying over a million dollars a year for inmate healthcare.
Ouch.
Yeah, ouch.
Yeah.
This is like the cost of everything. It keeps going up and up and up.
On your comparisons uh with Grace Harbor, you're saying uh it included the director. Uh, does he have a director of this, this uh healthcare thing? Or is it some other director that's included in that rate or do you know?
No, so that, so Grace Harbor actually uh went out and hired their own doctor or director or whatever you want to call them to. So they're under the payroll. So they hired a doctor and then RNs and everybody else, and they actually are employees of Grace Harbor. And so that's what, that's what I mean by director. He's the, the doctor basically that oversees the healthcare program out there. There is, I, I looked into that years ago about, about the possibility when I was down in Lewis County of changing uh and hiring our own uh medical people. Uh, but there was quite a to do with the risk pool about, about had taken on that insurance liability. And the malpractice insurance and the risk pool, uh at that time, we really wasn't interested in it. So it's something we may address. I mean, cause this contract's gonna end here, you know, in another ten months. And um, you know, I don't know what your guys' flavor is, but I think if we got to RFP, um, you know, we can look at, we can look at that or we could, I, I don't know. Honestly, don't know where we need to go. All I know is you have medical coverage.
Chief, I'm in favor of your, if, if your requested increase uh as proposed. Now, I do think we do need to go out and I think we need to do some homework with some of our local uh ones uh entities that have talked before with us, but we've never pulled triggers on it. Uh, maybe now might be an opportunity. But for now, I'm supportive of just moving forward with the proposal.
Commissioner Shitty?
Yeah, I'm supportive as well. I appreciate you going back and having the conversation um with Shannon and, and getting some clarification on that. Um, you know, this is what comes next is ultimately more important than um, you know, making the adjustments to this, to this contract. We want to make sure that we have that coverage, and I think it was really helpful that you outlined that we've had some gaps in service um as, as we're working through this. So definitely supportive, but um, you know, want to keep an eye to the future and, and just kind of figure out the, the best way to provide those services in a, in an economical, affordable way.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, I'll, I'll support it also. Have we ever reached out to see if we could work something with the hospital or with the, the Shelton family, the clinic?
I haven't. I don't know. Prior to me, I don't, I'm not sure. I don't know if we have at some point in the future in the past or not. Commissioner Nelleren, do you know?
I do know that uh I was never involved with the actual reach out, but at the time, uh when somebody reached out, they were not very interested in Mason County. But there was another entity that I am, that's what I'm thinking about in my head, but before I say anything, I'm actually gonna make a phone call uh today and see if I can start to establish a relationship so that they can come in and talk to Chief Hanson uh about. I'd like to have them have a full conversation about a whole wraparound of services they thought about and talked about bringing out services to uh South Mason, and they have uh brought some, but there was a talk at one point for mental health, everything. Uh, we just never got together on it. Now maybe it's time where they may not be interested, but I will reach out and ask them to speak with you, chief. See what you can do.
Yeah, thanks.
Alright, great. Thanks, chief.
Okay, uh, I'll move on to the other one that uh Chief Drackby and I put together. It's just on some unanticipated costs on the operational side of the house over here. Um, I, I just, I, if you've read the, the agenda form, we're not asking for any budget amendments or anything like that. We just want to inform you that there were some unanticipated costs on the operational side, which are pretty significant. And um, we've been, we've been trying to be very responsible in the last few years, making sure that uh any, any money that we can send back to the county is the right thing to do for the county and, and for our taxpayers. And uh, we, but this year, it, it looks like we've got some operational costs that we did not anticipate. And I just want to um throw those out there and, and say that we're gonna uh be as good as we can about uh being fiscally responsible. But just because of the unanticipated nature of those costs, we may have to come back later in the year to talk about uh shifting uh money from salary and benefits over to cop, cover some operations. And so um, I don't know if you want me to go over everything on that list, but there were a few, there were a few significant items. One of the things was um the polygraph school. Uh, we had talked about including the cost of the polygraph school in the budget last year. Um, we were asked to come back and um brief it when it came up, just so that you would know. Cause we were a little cer- uncertain on the timeline. Um, we, we have one of our polygraph examiners is looking to move on to a job with the state. And we need to get a couple other polygraph examiners in there. So that was, the cost of that was not included in our budget. So I'm, I'm including that on the list. One of the other items that was kind of a, kind of a big one for us on the operation side, and I didn't really know what to do at the last minute last year other than to defer it, and that was our credit card bill at the end of the year. Um, as you'll see on the briefing form, our, our credit card uh statement comes out on the twenty-fifth, which happens to be Christmas. And then because of the holiday, we had the twenty-sixth off, and then we had to have our bills in to be paid at the county the next day on the twenty-seventh. And there was no way that we could go through that credit card bill, reconcile all of the purchases to ensure that that bill was correct before we sent it over. And so I opted to defer it to make sure that we did the right, uh, we did the right reconciliation with that bill. Um, the other, the other big one on that list was um the rifle upgrade. I know that we came to you folks on uh our rifle purchase and, and you agreed to pay for that. And um, we're very, very grateful for that. The, the cost difference there is we realized that um we really needed to have about five extra rifles than what we had requested. Uh, the reason being is one, because sometimes they break and we have to reissue them, and we don't want people to be out of service. Or two, which is far uh more likely and uh not, not a great scenario, but it does happen on occasion. We actually have to use force. And those rifles have to be taken offline and put into evidence, and we need to have rifles on the rack ready to reissue. And so we, we felt like five was a responsible number in order to have those to reissue either for repair or in the, the event of a NOI S. And so um those were the, those were the big ones on the list. There were a couple others that were on there. Um, the Terradyne armored vehicle, uh, there were literally dozens of options on that thing. And we were trying to figure out all the options, everything else. And when we got to the end and we're checking our list and we're communicating with them about radios, we've realized that we forgot to put the cost of the uh cradle point in there, which was about, about five thousand bucks. And so that just kind of outlines what's on that list right there. Again, not asking for a budget supplemental. Uh, it's early in the year. Uh, we just wanted to uh be transparent in what's going on with our budget and some of the decisions that we made so that we come back and, and talk to you later in the year um about our operational budget that you'll, that you'll know by.
Yes, Commissioner Nelleren.
Yeah, uh, under sheriff, or I actually, the other commissioners, commissioners, uh, it may not be a budget supplemental, but we may want to have a quick conversation about uh money for the rifle upgrade, pistol upgrade, uh, uh, the armored vehicle. Uh, cost, those were set aside out of ARPA funds, I believe. And so we probably need to just have a discussion about uh covering them through.
I think it's, I think it's split. So I think the armored vehicles are, but I think we did the firearms out of general fund.
I, I think that's correct, Commissioner Shitty.
Then I think we should follow through with the ARPA fund though uh and finish that one out. I'm a little bit uh going back to my mind. We did this before when it came to polygraph trainers. And so historically, we have been, how's the, the cost uh compared to when we did it before? Do you know?
Well, like everything, the cost goes up a little bit over time, but I do think that's fairly comparable. The real, the real cost is, is not in the school, it's in the, the, the vehicle and the, the per diem and the other things while they're there for three months. So it's, it's standard per diem rates for most of those things.
And those rates have got, have increased quite a bit.
Yeah.
Alright, so this is basically a heads up and um, maybe we're gonna ask Mark to look into the ARPA funds. Cause if there's enough there um that can cover that additional, I think it was what, five thousand?
Yep, just over five thousand.
You're also, you're also not gonna have that twenty-three thousand uh in training in anywhere in your budget line. So you'd have to do some kind of action if we didn't do something uh budgetary. Cause you don't have any place for that, right?
No, we would have to pull it from other lines, like often happens from bottom line at the end of the year, but it's not, it's not preferable. Um, I, I just wanted to, you know, throw it out there that we're, that we're willing to work with the commission however you want to. If we want to see where we're at uh with operations towards the end of the year and want to pull from salary and benefits. Because as you know, the amount we send back in salary and benefits has been fairly significant the last couple of years due to positions. So um, we're, we're happy to work with the commission. Either way, we just wanted to be uh transparent and communicate early.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Mark, did you have anything you wanted to say?
I, I, I can work with Kate and Jen to, to see uh where we're at with ARPA funds. I do think we have a little bit left, so. Um, and then Jen's actually going over her budget schedule today, so, or tomorrow maybe. So it's, it's uh, I, I, I think that we'll have time to address that.
Sounds good. Anything?
It's always nice to have the asset completely paid out of one source so that it, that, so when we record that asset, it sits in that one fund. Especially with ARPA funds.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
Alright, anything else on that one, Commissioner?
I believe I have nothing. You want to move on to the next one?
Yep, you bet. I'll have uh Chief Drackby talk about the sole source.
Morning commissioners, I'm looking for the, the sole source uh authorization to purchase from uh Oregon Rifle for our um pistol upgrades uh for all the deputies, including the corrections officers. Um, there is a little bit more than what I originally had because it's coming out of Oregon and I didn't add the tax on. So I've added the tax on the total's about ninety-six thousand dollars.
Any questions for?
All good?
Those are all Glocks, right?
Yep, all Glocks.
Very cool.
Look at the commissioner throwing down her firearms knowledge there. Nice.
Like, it's my favorite.
We only have, uh, we only have one more commissioner. I'm gonna have Lieutenant Burke to talk about some uh money he got from WASPIC and be gentle on him. It's his first briefing.
Oh, do we have to be gentle?
Uh, so regarding the uh, the sheriff's office being awarded um a grant through WASPIC uh as part of the, the police reform laws, um, we were awarded, uh, the sheriff's office was awarded twenty-four thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-eight cents. Uh, so we're asking to increase our training budget line by that amount.
Do we need to drill down harder on this and, you know, make him stop?
Only if you want to, we'll give you whatever information you want, Commissioner.
So eventually we're gonna have to show money in, money out, so that'll be uh for Jennifer on a future date. Maybe that's when we can take in some of these other things as well. Get them all done, because if, if it's not spent uh, um, they'll come back to us at that end of that year anyway, so. Maybe we can include all this at the same time.
Yeah, we have that check sitting over here. We just wanted to brief you first, and we're happy to uh work with Jen and Mark on however, however the commission feels is best to move forward on the other issues.
Sounds good to me. Great job.
Alright, that's all we have. Thank you very much.
Hey, Commissioner Trask, I got an alibi. A couple of clarifications in that document. I just reviewed it again that I put forward with you for the HCS uh project. And um it looks like I clarified on one item about the holiday nursing hours effective January first, two thousand and twenty-three. But I'd like for the whole package to be effective January first, twenty twenty-three. Um, and then the other thing is, is I misspoke. I said eighty dollars per hour for it, and it looks like it's eighty-five on the agreement. So I just wanted to make sure you guys were clear in that.
I'm still comfortable moving forward.
Okay. Right, thanks.
Alright, great. Got all three of us.
Thank you.
Nice alibi.
Well, little thing, uh, Commissioner Shitty, that was a smart move to, to, to uh pull that one line out and ask them to uh see if they would accept that as the change.
Yeah, good compromise. I appreciate them being willing to work on that with us.
Yeah, save just money.
Alright, anything for the sheriff's office?
Yes. Right now, of course, again, there's a lot of bad things that get said out there. I want to say that we have an incredible staff. You don't see any of that stuff here. Our people are trained differently. They are, they are held to a high honor. And I gotta tell you, I am so honored to work with each and every one of you. And I know for a fact that our department uh would be the ones that would protect somebody from that, not let that happen. So I want to thank all of you uh for your fine work here in Mason County.
Uh, thanks for that, Commissioner. I really appreciate that, and we can't thank you folks enough for supporting uh the things that we need to do. Um, at the end of the day, uh, our job is really to facilitate the work that our good folks out there in the street are doing every day. And those are the ones that are representing us and um you, as well as us, are just here to support them and make sure they can go out and do the good work that uh we hire them to do. So I appreciate those words.
Put back out that video one more time of that, where he broke his cuffs and just how, how even under a stressful situation like that, where any regular human may have went to be in very protective and losing their stuff. Our people held so tight and so professional that they could have given the training on how to do it, even in the middle of all that. So put it back out on the, on YouTube. People need to see what Mason County does. We're a little different here.
They did a fantastic job on that event. Yes, sir.
Yep.
Finding examples, I would say. Mason County rocking again.
Alright, thank you, commissioners. Appreciate it. Have a good day.
Thank you. Alright, let's move on to the EDC, Jennifer.
Good morning. Just wanted to meet back up with you. The last time I briefed, um, I had following meetings for the Economic Development District. I've got some more clarification around that process and um said that I would come back and, and kind of give you an update where we are with that. So um, we have pulled together an RFP for the consultant services that goes out on the twenty-seventh. Um, or that went out on the twenty-seventh, I apologize, January twenty-seventh. We are looking to get proposals in for that consultant um by February tenth. Um, we're going to move this as quickly as possible. It's an eight-month contract. So our final deadline for our project report to the EDA is August first. So that kind of gives you a scope of what that project looks like. So the consultant that we will be hiring is going to work on the um Economic Development District SEDS report, the regional report as a whole. Um, it's also included in his contract to do um individual partner work with each respective county. So we will be seeing that breakdown for the county happening at each of the county's local levels. That will include work towards that um prioritized projects list. So we're looking at the timeline for that, right around where we talked about April, May. We'll probably open it, open it for project submission in April. Um, May will be when that task force kind of comes together. And the task force, as I see it right now, will include representatives from each of the public entities that would have projects that would be included on that project's list. Um, that could shift a little bit depending on what um the consultant pulls out from a region, regional perspective and from some of those local perspectives um as we move through that, but that's, that's about generally where we're sitting right now. Um, we're hoping to have the um award for the consultant in place by the twenty-fourth of February, um, and it'll, it'll be moving pretty quickly after that, so. We're, we're definitely moving forward. I did also speak with the EDA rep and the Economic Development Representative for Washington through the Economic Development Administration. Um, her name is Laura Ives. She is wanting to do um community tours and community meetings with each of the, the four counties, really getting to know the areas that, that she'll be representing and um get a really good handle on it. It's a good initial meeting to have with her, especially as we ramp forward with other EDA requests. The more information and the more this is who we are that they can already know before those applications even get submitted. It's some good work. So we'll be setting that up. That's outside of the, the EBD work. I just wanted to let you know that, that that should be happening as well. So it's a pretty quick update for me. I am happy to answer any questions. Um, it's a new process being back to actually federally funded. So this whole first year, um, and all of the representatives of the other counties as well haven't been through this through this either. It's all new people, so it, it'll be a very good learning first round.
It'll be a great adventure, right?
It will be. I'm happy to answer any questions. If you have them at this time, you're also welcome to reach out to me um one-on-one if that works easier.
Alright, commissioners, any questions?
Alright, super fast. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Alright, let's move on to our auditor's office.
Morning commissioners, happy Monday.
Thanks, you too.
Hey, we appreciate the opportunity to brief you guys on a, on a plan that Marie and team have, have pulled together to uh redesign our, our existing space um in our existing offices to provide for more efficient processing of ballots during election time. And also for more accommodation or more comfortable accommodation for election observers. Since I came on board, Marie has done an amazing job of, of uh bringing me up to speed on a number of things. And one of them is the need for this redesigned and expanded space for elections operations. And so I'm here to advocate for that idea, and we'll be coming back to you in February with a, a request for action. But we wanted to give you a heads up on what we had in mind. Um, Marie and I started with Mark Neary. We, we met with Mark and talked about ideal solutions for a long-term new facility for election operations. And that, those opportunities really are not there for us in the near term for a variety of reasons, so that's when we shifted gears and started to look at what can we do with the available space to make better use of it, so. I would like to turn it over to Marie, because as, as I said, she worked very closely with the rest of the team, and I think have come up, have come up with a great proposal and plan. And I know we have Kelly Frazier on too, if, if there's any details around more of the specifics on, on the restructuring or the construction activity piece of it, Kelly can help out with that, but let's turn it over to Marie.
Good morning, everyone. So, in, I submitted to, of course, Mackenzie, the basically just a draft layout of redoing the upstairs Auditor's Office area to accompany election staff and move all of ballot issuance and voter registration activities to, back to that second floor where we used to be pre-COVID. Just in a different area, because you know, they've totally remodeled up there, and so we need to kind of move back to, toward the back of the building versus the front of the building. So in that layout, I just presented just a brief layout to accommodate election staff up there and make a space for voter registration and ballot issuance activities, and then on the, in the ballot processing room, knowing how cramped it is in, just even in a small election, and when we're getting into a large election, which we anticipate will be huge next year, and with the time restraints to get that facility, you know, a new elections full processing area, and the restrictions that we have, that's not gonna happen. So we need to think about long-term, you know, our short-term of twenty-twenty-four, and still maintain our goal for long-term, which would be our dream elections, you know, facility, so. We're just asking that you, you know, look into this and give us the okay to move forward. Any questions?
Oh, I'm sure we will.
We should probably talk about the estimated price tag on this, we think we can get the job done for about twenty-five thousand dollars or less, that money presumably would come out of a real estate excise tax fund one. And again, it just really entails moving the staff from the Elections Office upstairs with the Recording and Licensing Department team, and then reorganizing, restructuring the space downstairs for more efficient processing of the, you know, actual ballot operations, and also providing some more physical, physical security for the tabulation area.
And Kelly has mentioned that he can do all of that work, and Kelly, feel free to step in whenever you need to, and do everything internal, so.
All right, any, any questions or comments from? I see me.
Not for me.
See Commissioner, another one shaking his head.
Yeah, that's a no, no questions.
I'm sure you're all aware of what we're, you know, our, our space limitations and some of the pressures that we're under for, you know, when we're processing ballots and still maintain transparency, it gets a little crazy.
Well, what is it, they say elections have consequences, and I expected something like this with the new selection of auditor, the question I have, we spent a lot of money to change it as it was right there, but I assume Kelly's looked at it and says that this is the best option in order to get where the new auditor wants to go. And if that's not the case, Kelly, I need you to let us know, if you think there's a better option that would accomplish the same thing. No, I think this is the best option we have at this point in time, unless we would like to build a new election center, which is the future. Thank you.
This is one of those things that they don't tell you when you run for office, is that or that you don't know about, when you get elected to office, is that you're gonna spend an imaginable amount of your time chasing square feet and thinking about office space, so that's, that's under other duties assigned, so. All right, Kevin. Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
In my dream world, it would be moving the commission out and having elections and the Auditor's Office down here on the bottom floor.
Well, you know, Commissioner Trask, we did talk about that, but I didn't want to bring it up today, because I didn't want you to feel as if we were we had you in our sights for a land grab, so, but it's good to know that you guys are thinking about that as well.
Yeah, no, there are so many options that, that and, and I, and I kind of think that there's something, Kelly and I have talked about this before too, and I think I mentioned it to Mark too, Mark, I see your hand up, and so maybe I'll let you jump in before I.
Finish, you're good.
No, I was, there's, your office is kind of divided anyway. You've got, you know, your finance team down here and the rest of, and part of elections down here, and then the rest upstairs, so I don't know, there's gotta be some other options as well, so I think before we jump into that one and approve that one, can we take a look at maybe a couple other ideas or maybe options that, that might be out there?
Absolutely open for suggestions.
Okay, Mark, do you want to jump in?
Yeah, I, I just, I, I had a conversation with Auditor Dunkle and Marie, and you know, really talking about the timeline associated with when they need it up, so they, they would need a new processing center by, before January of twenty-twenty-four. So that timeline, in terms of having to build something, you know, find a piece of property or suitable space, build it and, and have it ready for the presidential primary, I think is, is a tall stretch, just that we could get all that done, so that was my concern, so I think what you're seeing today is a result of that conversation with, within, internal within the Auditor's Office, they looked at the space that they had, and they said, how do we improve our ballot processing space to really accommodate individuals that want to come in and view the process? And I think by taking out some of the, the employees' desks in that area, and opening up that space a little bit more is, is going to not only make the processing of the ballots more efficient, but transparent to the public.
Thanks, Mark.
And so would we need to have, or would you need to have a person in that area right now, full-time, or would everybody be moved upstairs and that closed? Unless there's an auction going on.
We'd have everybody upstairs unless there's an election in progress, go ahead, Marie.
Yes, so be pre-COVID, that's how we operated. Election staff was all upstairs, voter registration, ballot issuances was all upstairs, it was just in a different configuration. And then after elections came down and through COVID, and then they remodeled, so everything's kind of set for them. And then, but pre-COVID, this area here in, where for the elections was strictly just processing, we were not down here unless we were processing ballots.
Okay, so I guess next steps forward would be to get Kelly to, to draw something up and get a, so your estimated cost is about twenty-five thousand? From REIT?
That's what the number Kelly gave me.
And you have some hand-drawn sketches of the proposed floor plan in the, in the briefing deck, and if we want Kelly to prepare something more formal, I guess we can work with him on that.
No, they look like engineering drawings to me.
That would be me.
They were very nice, very nice.
Did you want something more formal or accurate, Commissioner Trask, or is that?
No, that's, that's, that's fine, Kelly does a great job, and, and I.
Structural gonna happen there, we're gonna throw up a couple of walls and, and replace some carpet and put it up more desk, I mean, it should be fairly fast and fairly easy, we'll do it all in-house, all during hours.
Alrighty. Sounds good, I think you've got three Commissioners that support it, so.
And again, if there's other, other suggestions you would like us to consider, we are all for it, I want to thank you guys for your time this morning to hear about this proposal, and Marie, thank you for the great job working with the team, and Kelly, thanks for the amazing support, really appreciate it. And Mark, thank you as well.
Yeah, thank you to everyone, it's been a it's been interesting, but we're just trying to make it better, and that's all we can do with what we have for now.
For now.
So Commissioner Trask, what we're looking to do is just to add this on to the budget when we do the supplemental. What are we exactly doing today, or just educational for the moment, and we're bringing something back in the near future to put on the agenda.
Mark.
So Jen's on here too, and she could probably speak to it even better, but we do have dollars budgeted within REIT one to do capital projects associated with our accounting facility, so. Waiting for a quote back to finish out District Court, and then we have some work to do up in North Mason County. So once we kind of get an idea of what that total looks like, then I think we'll have more more ammunition to come back and, and talk to the Commissioners about what we need in the budget, but Jen, do you feel like there's there's adequate budget in there now, or would you like to, to process something different?
I think that for now, there's adequate budget capacity, and we can look at maybe during the second budget amendment later on in, in the year, look at adding, adding something then if needed. That would be my recommendation.
Because if we're gonna do it, we might want to do it sooner rather than later, you have a February election they have to do down there, I'd assume, and then after that, a, a small window.
Yeah, yeah, my anticipation or my would like to have it would be before the April election. Once we get out of the April election, then we go into candidate filing and the, you know, start gearing up for the August primary, and then we're back into the November, and then in September, we'll know when the presidential primary is supposed to be set, and they have been, there's been discussion that that could happen in January, and that's why we would like to try to get things going early in the year versus later.
And I'm not suggesting waiting to do the construction piece, just to be clear.
Oh, thank you.
All right, well, I think as long as Jen and Mark say it's good to go, then then I think all three Commissioners are supportive.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And again, nice job, Marie, thank you.
All right, let's move on to community development. Kelly, there you are.
Yeah. Good morning.
Morning.
First item I have is a contract renewal for services with the county's hearing examiner, Phil Olbrecht and Associates. It's been, I believe, over twenty years, maybe nearly thirty, since we've renewed our contract for an hourly rate, so he is increasing his hourly rate, still very competitive, and I believe we were one of his first contracts after the Growth Management Act passed, so you know, Mason County, of course, is his favorite, so I recommend the county renewing this contract.
Why wouldn't Mason County be his favorite? Commissioners, any questions? Oh, can't hear you, Randy.
I am supportive, I thought we did something with him though a few years back, about six years ago.
It, it, you know, it is possible, since I did, there was a gap of me being here between two thousand nine and twenty sixteen, so I may.
It happened while you were gone.
Let's say that.
All right.
Okay, and then the next thing I have is actually just requesting to set a public hearing for February twenty-eighth to consider amendments to Title seventeen and Title fifteen relating to the Shelton urban growth area. And looking at change, amending our code to be able to utilize the city of Shelton's planned unit development standards under certain conditions for certain projects within the urban growth area, when a project development can get city services, so sewer and water, and they're gonna sign a service agreement with the city of Shelton for services, would allow the development to have higher density, residential densities, and we believe that this amendment will help attract residential development within our urban growth area of Shelton.
Any questions?
So just to be clear, so I understand it correctly, we're looking to, to change our code to allow for the multifamily if they will provide the sanitary and water services to that parcel, not conditioned on it moving into Shelton, it's other, just if they agree to service it.
Exactly, so if, if a development proposal goes to the city and they're able to get services from the city and sign their extension agreement, don't have the exact terminology, but it is their service agreement where the city extends their water and sewer services outside of their city limits. And if, if a project development is able to do that, and then they can increase their densities by us utilizing the planned unit development. It does require a public hearing with the county's hearing examiner, that's the amendment to Title fifteen, so it gives the hearing examiner, the county's hearing examiner authority to review those planned unit developments, so there's still criteria that needs to be met in a public hearing. Has to show a public benefit, and it would be the development that would be paying for those service extensions, so that increased density is important in order for the project to pencil out.
So, and we'll have further conversations on all this.
Correct.
But the one thing I would worry about is that there was a requirement that they have a no contest to, to annexation by doing it, and I, and I don't think that would be appropriate, I don't want to set that, set us up for that.
The city of Shelton already has a no contest agreement with any project that gets the extension agreement, so if there's a project that negotiates with the city for extending services outside of the city limits, they already are required to sign a no contest for annexation.
The, just want to make clear, that can be an issue for the county. So we need to be aware of that as we're looking at this. Okay. What is that?
That's somebody in the front lobby getting the attention of our folks back here.
For those that didn't hear, it's a chime, and it sounds like for who the bell, no one knows for who the bell tolls, tolls for me. Team expected an ax murderer comes to the door, okay, go ahead.
Commissioner Shuji, anything?
No, I think that means our time might be up, so I'll just say I'm comfortable moving forward with the public hearing.
As am I.
So this, will, I'm proposing this goes on the action agenda for tomorrow to set the public hearing for the twenty-eighth.
I'm good with that as well.
And next up is Marissa.
Hi Commissioners, I simply have some map corrections, six parcels that I became aware of through the Assessor's Office or property owners coming in and asking what they can do on their land. So just looking at the GIS map and finding inaccuracies, and six parcels, and they, the, just wanting to update the GIS layers, they currently don't match our proofing logs and spreadsheets from the early two thousands. So the zoning information obviously didn't get translated to GIS correctly, and I'm just hoping to get this set a public hearing for February twenty-eighth, and that would be on the action agenda. And that would be on the action agenda for, to get it on the action agenda for February 7th, set a public hearing for February 28th.
Commissioners.
Yeah, that's good with me.
Let me see, Commissioner Netherland nodding his head. So you got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kel, do we have anything, anything else, force?
We're all good.
All right, anything for Kel? All right. Thanks, Kel. Let's move on to public help.
Okay, good morning, commissioners. So we have just one item today, and that will be with Melissa.
Good morning, commissioners. Dave mentioned we've got one item today. Just sharing with you on behalf of the Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board, their 2022 annual report and funding priorities for 2023. I'm going to attempt to just very briefly highlight what some of those recommendations are. The report was divided into three of the main categories. So we have housing and homelessness, behavioral health, substance use disorder, and mental health. A lot of the housing priorities are really kind of in line with what the city's homeless task force was trying to accomplish. So a lot of emphasis on increasing emergency shelter capacity for both families and single adults, as well as exploring what possibilities there are to really focus on permanent supportive housing. I don't know if that might include some capital projects. For behavioral health and substance use disorder, I think the board is really pushing to prioritize some sustainability for our existing programs. So we have programs in the jail. The Behavioral Health Transportation Program has since proven to kind of be, really fill a gap that we mean in this community, as well as exploring a crisis coresponder program with law enforcement. And finally, one of the main priorities for mental health is really kind of moving a little bit upstream and focusing a lot of work in the schools, increasing engagement with youth and families. I think especially for a lot of our smaller rulers, rural school districts. There's just been a real lack of resources and support there. So the board emphasizes that this is very much a living document. I think that there is a very high chance that there's going to be changes depending on how things go. As further conversations go on, as we explore what the funding sources are going to be for some of these projects, what kind of partnerships are going to be developed. So at this stage, the board's really just asking for the Board of County Commissioners to approve what is the priority now? And I'm happy to share what kinds of comments, questions you have for them. And I think going forward, we'll definitely see a lot more briefings as projects start to roll out.
Great, great. Any comments or questions, commissioners?
I'll just make a couple of quick comments. I really appreciate being able to to work with this group. We have some really smart and engaged citizen members that are on there, as well as folks that are actually in the trenches doing this work day in, day out. And so I think this represents a really thoughtful list of priorities and actions. And I think in particular on the housing side, one of the recommendations, you know, was looking for us to adopt the provisions of House Bill 1590, which was enacted in law a couple of sessions ago. And and so once we're finalizing our housing needs assessment, I think there will be an opportunity to kind of look at how those, those two items can work together to start addressing some of the housing issues. And then, you know, really just trying to leverage our partners on the behavioral health and substance use side, where we're looking to to build more partnerships between service providers and law enforcement to to give a little bit of additional support frankly to both, both sides of that equation. So appreciate the effort that went into this. And it is, you know, we're going to be obviously watching what the legislature does this year. And there may be some, there may be some changes and some opportunities that we can go after for that based on what happens at the legislature this year too. So just definitely want you both to to dig in a little bit on this and and see how we can work together this year on achieving some of the priorities and recommendations that the group put forward.
I'm pretty excited about the the movement and seeing the direction that we're going. Just one, so I saw House Bill 1590 in the briefing materials. Can you put the year that that bill went through? Because I know in the past I've looked at other bills and you have to look for a specific year to get the, the bill. So if if we just maybe start add the, or start adding the, the year that the bill was passed by the legislature, that would make it, at least it would make it easier for me.
I can add that. Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. I think the direction forward is is pretty amazing. And Commissioner Shu, you're correct that you, there's big brains on this and compassionate hearts. And so it's neat to see the the movement forward. The task force did quite a bit of work and it's good to see that that work is is moving on. All right, anything else for Melissa or for Dave?
So Dave, I just sent you over a text message. Please take a look at it. I mean, a lot of this, but I'd really like an update to see what we're actually doing about it, please. Thank you.
Yeah, and there's that one in, in just for Commissioner Trask, the homeowners association we were working with last fall, we're adding some more to that list of of code violations. So working with them as well.
Yeah, that's awesome. They, it was great to see all of the HOAs that came together for that meeting. So hopefully they can continue that process too.
That's all I have.
All right.
Commissioner Trask, the sad part of being here, we've had a few times where we've gotten them all together and then their residents throw them out. It's just the way it works. You come in riding your people out on a rail. You go out the same way, especially in HOAs, you see it over and over and over again. Good people, but when they try to make those changes, other people disagree. It's, it's tough.
Yeah, it's part of life. You can't make everybody happy. All right. All right, thank you, guys. Let's move on to public works.
Good morning. Not sure Mike might have jumped away from his desk. But this morning, commissioners, we have one item and we are requesting to purchase an F-550 and outfit it as one of our, our small plow and sanding rigs. And we had this budgeted last year, if you recall, our list of purchases identified for our ER, our fleet. This was one of those items and we were unable to do it, backlog. As you know, I'm sure you've been hearing about equipment being delayed and unable to fulfill orders. And we were recently notified that we could purchase one. So we're requesting approval to do that. And I see Mike did jump on. So if you do have any further questions about that, happy to, happy to answer them.
Well, I'm supportive. I do ask that you consider buying some, a few other ones on the secondary market to have for redundancy. Because I do know that that has been some, one of the issues has come up as we clear them out, expect that we're going to get other ones in. We didn't always get other ones in, having some of those older ones that we bring into the fleet. That's, it's on that lot may not be preferable, but it's better than not having them. When we're bringing people from the sign group or whatever to to go ahead and kick in and help during an incident. But you can't do it without having some sitting back there. Some of that old stuff still is is good for emergencies.
You bet. Yeah, and as you pointed out, commissioners, this is equipment that we're using in neighborhoods primarily. So low volume, or low volume, low speed, smaller, smaller areas.
Yeah.
I am supportive as well.
All right, as am I. I was just a quick question or or comment. So this is normal gas. It's not a diesel.
Yes.
Okay, just curious. I noticed that.
Is that because it's the only one we can get? Or is that a choice? I'm curious too, now that you brought that up.
That's, that's the way they come. Okay. Yep, it's typical.
All righty. Well, let us know when you get it. I'd love to come and look at it.
Will do.
All righty.
Hopefully it's not snowing.
Right, exactly.
Oh, my goodness.
So far, we're getting on fairly easy this year compared to priorers.
No, why would you go say a thing like that?
I know, I know. Silly me.
Especially when it's this cold out type.
Dry cold, Mark.
Dry cold.
All right, anything for Loretta or Mike?
Yeah, I do. Loretta, the pothole that's been taken care of?
I believe if it hasn't, it should be shortly. I know that Rod was on it.
I think that's the same one we see every couple of years.
Yeah, so there's a couple of things going on. We're suspecting that it's to do with the water line. So the the long term better fix is to do some water line work. And so until we can get that coordinated and budgeted and and better plan for that, we're, we're basically just temporary patching that thing. So-
Better to temporary patches, leave it open. So there's some-
Absolutely.
Appreciate that you're looking forward to the long term. The other one, though, question or comment I have, I just got another email or or letter. But I get emails, phone calls. We've had conversations in the past about wave media, now astound, looking at our options. And I believe that that ball got dropped because I haven't heard nothing about it in the longest time. We're supposed to be looking at the options and weights and measures that we have to enact and enforce service. But worse than them is another one that I brought up in the past, but this one is much worse. And that is the telephone lines out there with Lumens or CenturyLink. It's gotten so bad now that these people are being left for a month without the ability to, to get help for their loved ones that are on a, on a machine for emergency contact because of heart issues and stuff like that. I'd love to see again that we follow up somewhere with looking at the options of what we have, what we can do to help these people. Because currently by doing nothing and just letting it slide and becoming something we don't talk about for so many months is not benefiting these people. And I know that this is not just an issue in my area because I get calls from all over where they're, they're just kind of leaving Mason County, probably leaving everybody out because it's an old updated concept, the regular telephone. But we can't just keep allowing it if there's anything we can do to help these people. So I think it's more of a comment than everything else, but I need you to know where I, where I stand and how I feel about it. I feel like we're dropping the ball because we have not had a conversation, done anything about it for a long time.
Commissioner, whenever you receive those calls or lack of service, please forward those to us.
Okay, I get them all the time. This, this letter here, it was sent to me in the form that was certified to make sure that that we do something. So I can tell you, you know, again, when they're waiting that long and they're sending a certified, we've dropped the ball. Thank you.
All right, anything else for Loretta or Mike? All right, thank you so much. Thank you. All right, let's move on to support services. Mark?
Thank you, commissioners. Our first item is with Diane and VA work.
Good morning, commissioners. For the veterans, the first thing I have is up in Belfair, the Veteran Service Office space. The contract is now with Crossroads Housing and it's at $550 a month, which would be paid from the Veterans Assistance Fund. Is the board good with that?
I'm good.
Okay.
Yes.
And I had a couple of policy updates we need to do for the veterans assistance. One of them is to put in there that the income verification is for the last 12 months of income. And then also that they have served at least six months in active duty. It's, it says so in the law, but the policy doesn't really spell it out. So we wanted to spell that out.
I prefer that. I would support it.
Good with me as well.
Okay, thank you. And then my next item is the Lodging Tax Advisory Board. We have an application from John Deleva as a generator. And he did attend our last lodging tax meeting and we think he'd be a great addition. He has several, it sounds like VRBO type rentals in Mason County. And he has, he has extensive tourism background.
Open positions and nobody else applied?
Yes, that's a hard one to fill. He'd be the generator. And we're not sure that Sean Tucker, who represents Alderbrook as a generator, his term is up in May and he hasn't really committed. So definitely will need to fill a generator.
Commissioner Trask, you serve on that one, right?
Mm-hmm.
Are you comfortable?
Oh, my gosh, I think he, he's going to be in a, a very valuable asset. A good member is his, his knowledge of tourism and, and his expertise in other areas. I think he's, he would be the perfect fit.
I don't need the interview. I'm good enough.
Good with that?
Yep.
Thank you. That's, oh, I do have one more thing. It's not on here, came to my attention. For the area agency on aging board, we do have two applicants and we have two vacancies. And that's another board that's hard to fill, with applicants for Becky Cronquist and Cynthia Stain. Does the, is the board good with appointing her? Do you want me to schedule interviews?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to ask how many openings, there, there are two openings or?
Yeah, two. Yeah, I know both of them. And I think that they would be good fits for the board. Some of the other commissioners want to interview or?
I don't know both of them. Probably like to say hi, see where they are.
Yeah, I'm good with interviewing.
Okay, I will schedule on the next briefing interviews with them. Thank you.
Diane, we got an email today regarding a resignation. Was that a resignation for an application or or resignation from the board itself?
It was an official resignation from Mern Stewart on the Noxious Weed Control Board. She didn't re, she wasn't, she didn't apply to be reappointed and her term actually expired, I think, last spring. And you, we've gone through some, some transitions with that board, but she did send in an official resignation.
So the actual issue is she didn't reapply, so we couldn't have appointed her anyway.
She did not, right? Because you know, that board is, it's a complicated process to be appointed because they have to get 10 elects to sign for their district. And so, no, she never did turn in the, all the paperwork.
Okay, because well, in reading it, it made it, left it sound like that we weren't getting on the job on that. But apparently, if you don't fill out all the paperwork, you don't do what you're supposed to do. Very much any of us can do. We can't-
I think part of it too, you know, we went through the transition with Patricia leaving. So-
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Diane. John, do you want to talk about CEMP? Actually, before we jump into that, I think it's, I think it is a good, I've talked with our WSHU extension folks and our new, our new weeds coordinator. And we are looking for, and we need some additional board members. So right now I don't believe that we have enough for a quorum, so that makes it pretty difficult to perform her work. So if you know of anybody in the agricultural community that, or individuals that are interested in, in weeds, the kind that grow wild, then please let us know and and let's reach out to them and see if they'd be interested in participating on this important board. With that said, John, I'll let you jump into your CEMP.
Good morning, sir.
Uh, this morning I continued to research to ensure that our conferency plan was in line with Washington state law. I, I found one that we may have to withdraw our plan and put the new changes in for, uh, county commissioners and declaring a disaster. It's R C W forty-two point one, four point zero, four zero, which states that in the event that a catastrophic incident reduces the number of county commissioners uh, of any county, then those county commissioners available for duty shall have full authority to act on the matters as the board of county commissioners. In the event that the county commissioners, uh, all the county commissioners not available, then the next available elected officials, other than the board of education, can act on behalf of the county commissioners. So I believe that we need to go in and identify who those other county, uh, if they, all the county commissioners are out of place, so that we can ensure that we have the appropriate people to make the right decisions.
Well, is, is the term out of place or what's the term that you just read?
Uh, that's exactly what it says, when they're not available. So if there's a catastrophic incident, commissioners are not available. Then the next identified elected officials can act on behalf of the full county commission. We haven't identified who that would be. And to ensure that our plans complete, I, I would recommend that we do that.
Yeah.
So John, have you checked with other counties to see who, who they? Pierce County has a, has a pretty good solid um, emergency response, um, policy. Do.
Yep. Yes, ma'am, I've reviewed their plan. They really haven't gone that deep.
Okay.
Their assumption is that there will at least be one county commissioner available. But having some experience, I would rather be safe than, than not.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, because then otherwise we would get into a debate of who the next elected officials would be and continuity of government. And I'd rather not get into that if we could avoid it.
Good fences make for good neighbors and good policies make for good fences.
I'd, I'd hate to get, go down that road too, but I think that I imagine. Sorry, I was imagining and it was not pretty.
If there's a fight to be had, there'll, there'll be a fight. That's the way it goes. So let's get it riding.
Yeah, can you check with other smaller counties?
Yes, ma'am.
The three commissioners and see who, who they have as their next elected.
Yes, ma'am. I'm continuing to dig through those, uh.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I still haven't out of the eight that I've looked at. I still haven't found anybody who's gone deep enough past the initial county commissioners to, to make decisions, so.
Well, and I'd still like to see what it, what that terminology, though, not available, uh,
Absolutely.
Yeah, so if you won't mind sending us copies of that too, it'd be appreciated.
Absolutely.
I'm meeting with a bunch of commissioners Wednesday night, so maybe I can bring this up at that meeting also.
It, it's pretty broad because the only board that it, it says cannot make decisions is the Board of Education. So that would leave all the rest of them open for making decisions on your folks' behalf if you're not in place.
Commissioners, can you think of any other entities that encompasses the whole county? Other than that, we'd have to set up zones.
Um, uh, well, the Sheriff's Office and the auditor and
No, but is that a board?
A lot of our other, the other electeds are countywide. Is that what you mean?
No, uh, were you asking, uh, uh, for a board or a person? A position?
I think it sounds like a position.
Yes, when you read the law, it, it, it leaves it open. So it says any elected county officials, except for the members of the County Board of Education, as are available for the duty, shall jointly act as a board of county commissioners and shall possess by majority vote, the full authority of the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, now we know why the other counties have not left us in place.
Yeah, it's kind of a hot potato because we literally would have to sit down and say, okay, these three, uh, and then go deeper if those three are not available as well. But it's something that we can, uh, look, look into and figure out as a county, how we want to approach that.
Now, in the past, didn't we have it set up so that, uh, head of emergency management was given that authority to make that determination?
Yes, sir.
That's what I thought we did. Because we actually went through that, uh, and it has, does it have to be an elected official? Could we have our administrator as that? Person?
I, I think we could, but I would like to put that forward to legal to make sure that we have the right word because it, it is really broad.
Let's put it, with the permission of the commissioner, let's put it to legal with a, with a, uh, uh, looking like administrator and then uh, straight down to emergency management, uh, manager or director again also because that's, sometimes that's going to be the one that's there.
Yeah, I'd be comfortable with that.
I'm good with that as well.
Alright, great. That's all I have.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John. So our next item is the, I, I believe on my agenda is the Engineers Guild. So Mary? Nancy?
We've got, morning Commissioners, we have an M O U that I'd like to brief you on and then move forward to action agenda tomorrow, if possible, with the Engineers Guild. There's, um, some wording in section eight point three, which is their rest and meal breaks, which needs to align with the Public Works contract. When both groups are activated for certain shifts, um, we want to make sure that we have consistency in the operational expectations of public works. And the M O U is attached here and it's, um, just these couple sentences about, um, thirty minute paid lunch after working more than two hours overtime and then an additional thirty for each additional four hours work. And again, we're just trying to create some consistency operations.
Sounds good.
Good with me.
Yes.
And the second one I have is a scrubber's error on the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-five Teamsters, um, General Services contract. Um, we're needing to do an M O U. Um, the, the, uh, Article seventeen had premiums for Washington Teamsters Welfare Trust Medical Plan B. Um, and it needs to actually be, um, corrected to reflect the P E V benefit instead. And so the M O U is also attached there. And again, just a scrubber's error.
Also good with me.
Yep.
Hey Travis, we can hear you.
We heard that too, James.
Alright, next on our list is, uh, December financial report with Jen.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm going to share my screen so you can see the, um, December financials. So beginning on page two of your packets, we have the, um, revenue for the general fund. And this is comparing all of twenty twenty-two to all of twenty twenty-one. So in twenty-two, we received, uh, forty-five million, seven hundred twenty-nine thousand. And in twenty twenty-one, we, we received forty-three million, eight hundred eighty-two thousand. So, um, that's an increase of about one, one point eight four-six million it over twenty twenty-one. So, um, we received a hundred and ten percent of our budgeted revenue in twenty-two compared to a hundred and eight percent in twenty-one. So any questions on, on this?
Just, could you provide a breakdown of the clerk's line for me, please?
Yes, I can do that. By, uh, just account number?
No, just, uh, explain to me what we're doing with uncollected revenues and.
Oh, so, um, the clerk's office has, um, budgeted nine hundred seventy-eight thousand for twenty-two. And you can see in twenty-one, um, three hundred and sixty-six thousand. So they have um, a little over six hundred thousand increase. And that was the budget amendment that we did at the end of twenty-two to account for the, um, the Blake Fund revenue. Um, that was all of the possible, um, Blake refunds. Um, I believe that was the, the Blake, the majority of it was the Blake refunds that they could have, um, possibly paid out and collected from A O C. So, um, so that's what that is. Does that help? Um, so moving on to the treasures revenue detail and go ahead and stop me if you have any more questions while we go through this. So, um, the treasures revenue detail, so comparing twenty-two to twenty-one, we received thirty-two million, five hundred and eighty thousand approximately in twenty-two compared to thirty million, a hundred and sixteen thousand in twenty-one. Um, we're at a hundred and twenty-one percent of our budgeted revenue in twenty-two compared to a hundred and fifteen percent in twenty-one. And, um, the big, uh, differences here are the big overages are, um, in our sales tax, which we'll go over a few, um, pages later. And, um, the city county assistance, which is tied to REIT and sales of property. And another big one that, um, that we we received a little more money than, than we budgeted was in, um, let's see where it's at, um, was an interest, interest in other earnings. So, um, we received seven hundred and thirty-four thousand and twenty-two compared to a hundred, a hundred and twenty-four thousand in twenty-one. And so as the interest rates rise, of course, we'll, we'll see probably a little more money in interest and maybe a little less in, um, in sales tax um, and in REIT. So, um, that's, you know, my prediction of, of the trend going forward. So any questions on this before we move on?
I'll agree with your assessment on that.
Um, on the expenditures for the general fund, we have, um, forty, we have expended forty million, seven hundred and sixty-eight million at the end of twenty-two compared to about thirty-eight million, four hundred and fifty-six thousand at, at the end of twenty-one. So we were at ninety percent of our, um, budgeted expenditures in twenty-two compared to eighty-nine percent in twenty-one. So looking very consistent there. And I'm really happy to report that nobody went over budget. So great job to all the offices and departments on, on their budgets.
Yay.
Um, moving on to the special fund, um, just looking at different revenue streams, um, we're kind of, kind of all over the board here. We have, um, community, um, development. Looks different than what I had on. Oh. Oh, that's twenty-one. Okay, sorry. I'm way back there. Alright, so, um, here we are, twenty-two. Uh, we're at, um, two point two point five million roughly in community development revenue, um, this year compared to, um, last year, almost three million. Um, but if you look at the, the amount that community development budgeted for their revenue, um, they actually received more in their twenty-two revenue than what they had budgeted. Um, so even though it looks like, uh, I mean, there is, you know, close to five hundred thousand less, uh, received in twenty-two, they were still over their budget.
But it just shows the trend.
Yeah, it, it does show, um, you know, just less than, than last year, but, um, but more than the previous four years. So, um, yeah. Um, other other trends, the sales tax again is up, the, um, and you can see that in the, the, um, the rural sales and use tax fund as well. That's tied to, um, sales tax. The filings are down and that probably has to do with the, the interest rate going up, I would imagine. The REIT is just slightly down at the end of twenty-two compared to last year, but we're still, you know, way up over the previous four years. Um, so just a slight downward trend. And then the lodging taxes still way up. So just kind of all over the place there. So any questions or comments?
I think that's the REIT that we're going to be seeing a decrease on that, as you were saying. And I think we already were seeing a decrease. We just had such a hot uh, early part that it, it skewed the numbers a little bit and made it seem much higher, uh, overall for the year. But with that, uh, being said, uh, this next year, and also we made up a lot because of the new structure of taking in bigger percentages of the higher end homes and now everything's a higher end home. So.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, so moving on to, um, the detailed sales tax. So we received, um, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand in the month of December. Overall, in twenty twenty-two, we, we received, um, close to nine point four million in sales tax. And we received, um, two point one nine four million above what we budgeted. We budgeted for twenty-two, um, seven point two million. Um, in twenty-three, we budgeted eight point four million, which is, you know, a million dollars, um, let, close to a million dollars less than, um, what we received for twenty-two. So it will be interesting to see, um, what the trend looks like for twenty-three, moving forward into twenty-three. So, um, questions or comments on that?
No.
Okay, on the six-year, um, the financial recap. So at the end of twenty-two, we had, um, twenty-six million, six hundred and fifty-six thousand in cash, uh, compared to twenty-one, um, we had twenty-one million, six hundred and ninety-eight uh, thousand in, in, um, in cash. We have, um, a recap on our revenue, a hundred and ten, where we were at a hundred and ten percent collected um, for the general fund. Uh, we were, we collected forty-five million, seven hundred twenty-nine thousand compared to our budget was forty-one million, four hundred eighty to four hundred and ninety thousand roughly. Um, our expenditures, we expended forty million, seven hundred sixty-eight thousand compared to our budget of forty-five million, four hundred and seventy-four thousand. So we were at um, ninety percent there, um. On our cash balances for the special and other funds, um, we are at a total of fifty-three million, four hundred sixty-three thousand and, um, a big portion of that, of course, is our American Rescue Plan Act, seven, seven point five-six million roughly. And, um, you know, if you remove that, we're still quite a ways ahead of where we were in the previous, um, few years. So, um, so things are looking good there. I'm glad that we've consolidated a few of these special funds into, um, their proper homes, I guess, if you want to call it that. Um, so it'll look a little less busy in, in the years going forward. Um, the motor pool summary is next. So we expended, uh, close to ninety-three percent of our budget. We expended in twenty-two, um, one point six-two million, um, compared to twenty-one, about one point three-seven million. And, um, that's to be expected. The fuel was up. We expended, um, three hundred and forty-three thousand compared to, uh, twenty-one, we expended two hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Um, so that was a big portion of that increase. And then, of course, we have more vehicles that were renting through enterprise, um, now than we did in twenty-one. And so that's, um, a big portion of the the increase as well. So, um, so we're still looking really good. I'll be, be, um, working on the um, enterprise comparison to E R and R and bringing that forward later on.
You read my mind because we're going to have to keep track of that for, in the long run to see exactly how well we're doing. Because we know these things are going to keep going up, but at what point do we have to reassess? But it looks really good. Great job, Jennifer.
Thank you. So the last things that I have for you are the revenue and expenditures for the special and other funds. So, um, for all the special and other funds, the revenue, we're at, in twenty twenty-two, sixty-three million, four hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred twenty dollars in compared to, um, twenty-one, sixty-one million, four hundred thirty thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. So we're at, uh, seventy-six percent of our total budget for twenty-two compared to a hundred and three percent, um, in twenty-one. Um, these are hard to compare because it's not like the general fund where, you know, most of it's salaries and benefits and little, very little um, capital. The special and other funds have most of our capital purchases and, um, you know, other grants that, um, you know, so it's very hard to compare apples to apples on the special funds. Um, we have the S C O K fund where we budgeted ten million. We have the SKEF fund where we budgeted ten million in revenue and didn't expend or didn't receive anything.
That's where it's at. Okay.
And then, yeah, and then Bell Fair is very similar. We have about seven million that we didn't receive there or or expend out. And so those are the major, major differences there. And so the expenditures kind of follow suit with that. And twenty-two, we expended fifty-one million, five hundred thirty-nine thousand compared to twenty-one, fifty-two million, twelve or yeah, twelve thousand. So we're at fifty-seven percent of our budgeted expenditures. And then this year and then seventy-four percent last year. So are there any questions on any of this for for the final for twenty-two?
This is statement you've made it so over all the years that I've been here, being able to answer questions. I, there was a point where I always had to ask somebody else to provide it for me. The way you provide these, I can get the latest and most up-to-date just by going back to my stack here that I have, and I can get my own answers. And that sure does help a lot. You've broken it down so much to where you know, literally almost everything I get asked or I need to come up with, I can I can get myself. So thank you, Jennifer.
You're welcome. Thank you. Yeah, financials should be nice and clear. So that's the goal. So thank you for that. Okay, I'm gonna stop my share. So the next thing that I have for you is a resolution authorizing Mason County to purchase from the United States government's purchasing agent, which is the U.S. General Services Administration. And I know we we have purchased things off of GSA in the past, but we were supposed to have and a resolution passed stating that we can do this. So this is just to get us into compliance with RCW thirty-nine point three-two point oh nine oh. And commissioners, if you are in agreement with this resolution, which has run by the Audit Committee, then I would ask that we put this on tomorrow's agenda so that we can purchase the underwater dive items for the DEM and the Sheriff's Office.
Sounds good.
Yeah, it's good.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. The next thing that I have are outstanding budget items from twenty-two. And so we had just a couple of one-offs. The first one is the Gorsuch Coalition dues. We have not paid them for twenty-one or twenty-two, and I don't think they were billed until real recently. And then they, you know, there was I think a little confusion as to where they should go and that kind of thing. So anyway, I just want to ask that we increase the budget for twenty-three and non-departmental to account for. We had budgeted five thousand for each year and the dues actually are ten thousand. And so we would need to increase twenty-three's budget as well, since we only budgeted five thousand. So I am asking on that item to increase non-departmental's budget by twenty-five thousand to account for those items for the Gorsuch Coalition dues.
But Jennifer, there is no dues. That's not what it was. We agreed that we would do the five thousand first year. And then we actually talked and agreed that we would do the ten thousand for the second year. I can't remember if we agreed to do it for three. But if we did, or if we need to, we may need to have that as an action somewhere establishing that we will continue to put in for at least. I would not like to see any open-ended. But you know, maybe another year, two years, however we set it up. And I also want you to remember that we also have to be a little careful because there may be competition at this at some point also with the bypass and and the like. So we want to be aware of that in the future.
Okay, so so five thousand for twenty-twenty-one.
Yeah, I think originally we had said ten, but they never spent it. They didn't even exist. They didn't exist until twenty-twenty-two. And so I think we had already agreed, though, that we would still give them five, I think. And then we agreed as a commission to give them ten for that that year.
We have a resolution on this. What does that say? Does that speak to this at all?
It doesn't speak to the actual dollars contribution, but it does speak to the fact that at the time, how to receipt money had not been set up yet with the city of Bremerton. So Bremerton subsequently was defined as the 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 entity that would collect all of these funds.
We were actually the first ones to come forward in the coalition. But either way, I think whatever we do, we need to have that conversation. We need to get it memorialized somehow. We can't just keep paying something without us saying, you know, we'll do it for this year, that year, or the like.
So I believe we have before, I'm sorry, Jen, go ahead.
Oh, go go ahead. I'll go after you.
Okay, I believe that we have before us a couple of invoices that we've received from the Gorsuch Coalition for twenty-twenty-one in the amount of ten thousand dollars and for twenty-twenty-two in the amount of ten thousand dollars. And then there's a, there's there's kind of a lead on within the communications that we received to think that there may be an additional charge coming in twenty-twenty-three. So would like to to get that solidified and and properly reflected in our budget.
Well, there is no additional charge unless we decide we're going to do an additional charge. If we want to be a part of it, we're not into this thing by contract.
Correct.
I want to make sure that we remember that. I'm very supportive of this. Remember, I'm the one that's on on that committee. But I've also been very supportive from the very beginning because it's something that absolutely has to be done. But I want to be careful that we don't just walk into this thing saying, wait a minute, we we are an organization that owes the money and, you know, we can't have our own voice or whatever. That's not how this thing was set up. It was set up that we agreed to give them money to help them get established. And then we agreed for another year to give them money to help them do some stuff. But if they want to raise more money, we need to talk about that. They need to talk about that at a meeting and see how that would work. I don't know who's making the decision here.
I think kind of where I fall on this is I I think we have to follow through on the commitment that we made for the previous years and just focus on that. And then whatever happens, whatever's decided at that group to be brought back to us for this year would be, I think, the most appropriate course of action. So clear the deck with whatever we've committed to and then move forward.
Do you want me, sorry, do you want me to bring that forward in as an action item to pay for twenty-one and twenty-two just to make it nice and and clear before we actually pay for that? And then we can add the amounts for twenty-one and twenty-two separately to the budget?
I'm fine with that. I I and I probably maybe Jennifer, maybe reach out to your counterpart at the city of Bremerton and have that. They're the fiscal agent, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So I would just maybe chat with them and see if there's any additional information you can bring back to us.
Okay.
And maybe you can let us know what our, you know, our return on investment. What are we, what are we getting for this?
Well. Last year.
What's that?
Seventy-five million dollars last year in the moving ahead Washington package. So.
Yeah, paid for some lobbying and marketing and and the putting together of the asks. That's what we agreed to. We have, as I said before, as I think Commissioner Shu's, we haven't agreed to any of the other stuff. We need to have that conversation and follow through with what we agreed to and then separate it out.
Well, I also want to make sure that that the money that Mason County is putting into this coalition, that it it is a benefit for Mason County.
Absolutely.
And and I agree with you, Commissioner Nellon, that we need to make sure that that the freight corridor stays at the top of our list.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, so I'll do a little more research and then come back to you again on that one, on the the city of Bremerton for the Gorsuch Coalition. The next thing that I have as part of this briefing is the DEM building rent for twenty-twenty-two. It was billed at the very end of twenty-two and the amounts did not match the budget. And that is something that the DEM building rent is supposed to be, you know, approved ahead of time and done as part of the other rates with the budget. And so we we held off on paying that bill. The amount budgeted was thirteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. The amount billed was fourteen thousand, six sixteen. And so what I'm proposing is paying the amount budgeted for twenty-two, the thirteen thousand, four hundred twenty-seven dollars now and adding that into twenty-three. And then as part of the twenty twenty-four budget, and we'll need to look at twenty-three as well to adjust that. We we would bring those rates forward as part of the budget process.
Yeah, that's how it's normally done anyway, right? That's that's our normal way of doing business. I don't want to change what we already do.
Okay. Great. So commissioners, if you're all in agreement with that, then yeah, I would like to add the thirteen thousand, four hundred twenty-seven to the twenty-three to the first budget amendment to to get that paid for DEM.
Yeah.
Great. And the last one that I have on these budget items is the CTG that which is the Corrections Technology Group. It's a maintenance and repair agreement for the jail security systems and doors. There was confusion as to which budget it was put into facilities or the Sheriff's Office. And so Support Services met with the Sheriff's Office and we went over, you know, who pays for what. And I feel like it was a really productive meeting because we we decided that any, anything that is for the building's function should be paid by the the benefiting department or offices budget. And then anything like facilities like repairs and things like that would be paid for by by facilities. So I'll be putting that into the financial policy to hopefully weed out confusion in the future on items like that. But I want to ask to put this amount, the sixty-eight thousand, six oh nine, which includes sales ta, sales tax into the Sheriff's Jail budget to pay for this maintenance agreement.
Sounds good.
And is everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm still trying to figure it out a little bit, but yes.
So the comparison that I like to make is things that are paid for for the Public Works Building, things like the gate and other items. The Public Works Department pays for that, and I think it needs to be consistent.
Yeah, no, I understood everything you said for how to break that down. I agree with everything you said. It was, my question was just on this one and how to best handle that. But no, I'm actually glad you did it. That's been an issue that's come up over the last eleven years a few times and came to a loggerhead. So the idea that you're putting together a policy for it is the best thing that happened for the county to make sure we don't have those issues again. It was just this one. I was just questioning how to do it. Because I know we told them that we wanted it done. I'm just wondering why we would just, why we would add it to the budget this time, where we would just take care of it ourselves this time and just go forward with the future policies.
I can answer that question, Commissioner.
Okay.
It's for consistency purposes. So when we look at the costs over a number of years, all of the costs specific to operating the jail are in the same place. So if we start pulling costs like these out and putting them in non-departmental one year and then throwing them back in the jail next year, then you have to dig into the details to figure out why those differences exist.
Great answer. I agree.
Great, thank you. And I do have one more thing that I wanted to bring up. So on January seventeenth, very late in the day, I received an email along with several others in the county from Enterprise Fleet Management. And they were asking if we had any five oh one C three nonprofit organizations that we or if we had one specifically that we would like to donate or do a grant to through Enterprise. It's an internal grant that they do. And they wanted an answer back by by Friday, the twentieth. And so I emailed each of the commissioners the next day and asked if if there was a a nonprofit that that you would recommend. And I heard back from two commissioners. And they both had stated the same organization, which is the the Youth Connection. And the Youth Connection does not have any, any of our board members on on it. So so there's no real conflict there. So anyway, I I heard back from two commissioners. So I let Enterprise know that 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 would be a a good nonprofit that we had heard from two commissioners on that. And in the future, I asked them to give us a little more time so that we could talk about this more. And it's about a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars, not a huge amount. But every little bit helps nonprofits, right? So I just wanted to let you know that Enterprise did did go ahead and do the paperwork for that.
So just, you know, I I don't know who I responded to. Maybe I responded to Mark, but I came back with a recommendation also. And it was not Youth Connection. It was for Turning Point. Although we have a board member that serves on that, she could have accused herself. I think that's an incredible organization. And I think it's honorable and admirable that she serves on that board. And they should not be not have that that opportunity because she does serve on the board. So Commissioner Trask, first of all, thank you for serving on that board. Let's say that. But I still think in the future that we should consider that board. I have a love for that organization. I I think the purpose is is incredible. And the things they do is it's incredible. So I hope that in the future we can have that conversation. We just asked that Commissioner Trask recuses herself from the conversation, but we still go forward with it because it's an incredible. They they do incredible things. So does Youth Connection. But I've I've known a lot of people that have come out of that Turning Point over the years, a lot, not a few, not not many, a lot. And with a lot of their life changed in the ability to protect themselves and family and restart over. So again, apologize about the emotional thing. Just want you to know that I did respond. I'm not sure how now. And I hope we will keep that open for the future.
Great. Okay, yeah, I'll remind them next year to give us a little more time if they're going to to do this again next year. Hopefully, they will. And we will have time to bring it forward and talk about it openly. So thank you. That's all that I have.
All right.
Thank you, Jen.
I know that was, it was a difficult decision. But and we've got so many amazing nonprofits here. So great job.
So Commissioner Trask, I've got a, I've got choice you can make. So we have one big topic is our non-representative employee recommendations for the class and and comp study. And then I have two small items that I just wanted to let the board know. So can I move those out of order?
Sure.
So the the interlocal agreement with the city of Shelton is specific for an agreement that we made with the city to make some contributions to Community Lifeline to allow them to provide twenty-four-seven cold weather shelter. And then the county received some opioid funds. And the city also received those opioid funds. So there's very specific regulations about how those opioid funds can be spent. Talking with Jeff Knighton from the city of Shelton, he asked if the, he felt like the city of Shelton's contribution or the the amount that they received was was so small, it was right around twenty thousand dollars that he thought it would be better off if they actually combined it with the county's funds. And then we could manage and and utilize those funds for specific opioid treatment work. So before the board is a interlocal agreement that I'd like to to bring on the agenda tomorrow. Specifically, talking about this agreement that a lot, basically has the city giving us money that then passes through to has the city giving us money that then passes through to some some of our folks in the county.
Good with me.
Yeah, we do.
Yes, me too.
Great, thank you very much. The other item I wanted to let the board know of and just kind of get your feelings on, which I feel like I'm pretty well know your answer, is I've been meeting with Deborah and and some of our delegation at the state legislature. And during that conversation, the one of our legislative representatives asked that we submit a capital request for preliminary design and citing of a new jail. So they this is something that we talked about a little bit before in terms of our legislative priorities. The the county association was not going to put that as a priority on their items for specific reasons and that some counties really didn't need or didn't want to have funds dedicated to a jail. I think that Mason County is very similar to smaller counties like us that really we we do need some money. So I'm I'm asking the board if you would mind if I completed a a a capital budget request that I could submit to the House of Representatives for some preliminary design and citing money for a new jail.
That's me.
My support.
Great.
Yeah.
So I will I will make sure you get to work on that and we need to come up with a dollar amount. So if you have any suggestions or ideas, please send them along. I can put the verbiage together, just want to make the the ask realistic.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you. And so now I will turn it over to Mary Rancier to talk about our nonrepresented class and comp study. I want to just preface this conversation with this is the first time that we're actually presenting some of the specific results that we've seen from the study. And so hopefully this can be a conversation between the Commissioners and a staff to get further direction on on if you feel like we're moving forward in the correct direction. So Mary?
Thanks, Mark. So just a reminder that we did, I did a briefing on the night for just a project overview about our methodology, the analysis, and then specific definitions around the study. And like Mark said, this is just initial findings, bringing forward recommendations that we received from the consultant for some discussion. I wanted to quickly review what market means and also give some context to the recommendation from the consultant. So market means that these are positions that are five percent and under or over either way, five percent on either side of our comparable counties. And then also a reminder, comparable counties are not the same as our competitor counties, right? Kids at Thurston, Pierce can't compete with them. So our statutory comps are Island, Skagit, Grace Harbor, Jefferson, Clallam, Calitz, and Lewis Counties, just as a reminder for everybody. So our goal, as it has been with the rep group, is to apply market adjustments to those positions that are five percent or more undermarket. And so this initial proposal of the findings kind of tackled those positions specifically. And again, this is just around base wages only. So on the first attachment where it says the initial classification and compensation proposal overview, there's that there's three different sections. So number one is adjusting the nonrep salary range to ensure that all steps are two and a half percent apart. Currently, steps nine and ten are at one point two five percent instead of two point five. Consistency in the salary scales is always a recommendation. And this proposal also includes addition of salary range alignments and then market adjustments or retitling of positions on the scale. So in the attachments for your packet, there is the current range and schedule of the nonreps. But looking at that number one, the so the first proposal is to change steps nine and ten of the nonrep scale to two point five percent between those steps for the entire schedule. Finance was amazing and costed this out for us, so it would be approximately seventy three thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. The second item would be the addition of new ranges to the salary scale, so a new range forty six, forty seven, and forty eight. Not really a cost associated with this by itself, but the reason for the addition of these ranges has to do with number three below and market adjustments into ranges that are not currently defined in our schedule. And then kind of the bulk of the findings is this number three. And this demonstrates the proposed positions needing those market adjustments. First column here is the position, the action to be taken. Some are just the market adjustment, others were recommending some retitling. With or without market adjustments, I do think it would be appropriate to begin titling in a consistent clarifying manner around the county. And then the new titles that were being proposed are next to the positions themselves. And then the final columns show the current range and then propose new range for each position needing a market adjustment. And at the bottom of the page, again, finance did a great job costing this out for us. So there's two different costs at the very bottom. So the cost of the range realignment with two and a half percent for steps nine and ten, so this would be all those recommendations in the table above, plus the two and a half percent between steps nine and ten would be three hundred and fifty thousand and ten dollars approximately. And then below that is another cost, and this would be the cost of all the market adjustments in the table above, but steps nine and ten remaining status quo at one point two five percent apart. And that cost was out at approximately two hundred and seventy six thousand and thirty nine dollars. This is probably a lot of information to intake over the weekend. So if you have any questions that came to mind, again, just for discussion and an initial recommendation proposal from the consultant at this time.
No, Randy. Can't hear you.
Just for understanding myself, this this puts them in about what percentile amongst our comparables?
I would depend on the position. So if you're looking at, for example, therapeutic courts case worker, moving them from a ten to a sixteen would put us we'd be right at the mid, so right between like four and five.
And you're making absolutely positive that these are all comparables?
Correct, yes.
Comparable job descriptions and and duties.
Correct, so at least seventy percent of the essential functions have to match, and there had to be at least four other counties that had something similar in order for it to be a comp or a benchmark position.
Okay, and I know that, you know, this is a pretty big hit and that it also is a big bow wave for the future. But we also know through our own conversations that although the term unrepresented means they're not represented by a specific union, it does not mean that they're not represented because we also represent them. Try to do the best we can to make sure that our staff that are not represented by a union are fairly compensated for the work that they put in for all comparables. So with that, what are you hoping to get from us today?
Well, I wanted to make sure I could answer any questions the Commissioners had and hopefully maybe get some traction on at least some retitling and some consistency around the county in that regard. And any other conversation that that you're needing my input on or Mark's input on?
Can I ask that you just put together some of them, take a bite out of them, put them together, send them to us early so that we could look at them, have a possibility of talking to you one on one beforehand and then briefing for putting it on the agenda for action?
When you say take a bite out of, so start with the ones that are highest undermarket and work from there? Or is there another order you'd like to see them in?
As the HR, I'd be curious to see which ones you think need to be handled more expediently than others based on all the reasonings that you would have in places the person is working with all.
Fair enough.
So one of the reasons that we brought this to you in this format, Commissioners, is because we wanted you to get a perspective of what that total cost looked like, right? So wanted to make sure that you all agreed that we were moving forward at the will of the Commissioners when we did the study and and are we moving in the correct direction? I I feel like we have great documentation associated with the recommendations that you have before you today. But I I wanted you to kind of understand what that what that looked like. What did that look like for a total dollar value? Because I feel like if we piecemeal it and we start bringing forward pieces, then we we often get lost in in the total cost of what we're looking at. So that that was the reason why I had asked Mary to to bring all this together and and kind of present all of the findings at once.
I appreciate, I need those numbers. I need to know what the total bow wave is going to be when making my decision. So I definitely appreciate you guys doing that.
And as Mary stated, there are, these are these are recommendations and the ranges. So if you go back to the documentation and the work that Mary did originally, she talked about how we really were looking at that fiftieth percentile, so not the men or the max of a salary range. But once we identified and the these in our comparable counties, the specific positions that we could compare with, Mary analyzed that fifty percent, the consultant analyzed analyzed the fifty percent, and that's where we kind of define that five percent, right? So if we said if we're more than five percent and they range anywhere from five percent to almost thirty percent difference, right? So there are there are definitely that that's a sliding scale on all those positions. And and I was, I think I was talking with one of the Commissioners, I can't remember which one. But you know, as we as I look at some of the positions that we've recently gone out for, and I'll use my position as an example. When the Commissioners decided they wanted a county administrator, you had somebody go out and and look at our comparable counties and say, how much are they paying for it? And when you set the salary for this position, it still holds true that it's right in range with our comparable counties for a similar position. So we've had that opportunity to do that with specific positions, especially when we've had trouble filling them. And we've dug into some of those details. I think what you see represented here are positions that probably haven't dug into those details in a long time. So now that we are, we're definitely seeing where Mason County has slid behind our comparable counties for for some of these specific positions.
I'll jump in real quick. I'm just super excited about this. Wanted to see movement on this for a few years now. And so to finally be able to show people that it is important to us as a commission. And 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 that they're important to us, their their value, you know, they're they're valued. And so I'm I'm just extremely excited about this. And I I would rather and this is just me, so I would rather just do it all at once. Because that way, we're not leaving anybody out. I think people have felt in the past that they've been left out, that they've been forgotten. And they truly have not. And this is this is just proof that that everybody is valued and they're not forgotten.
Yeah, a couple of quick clarifying questions. So as as we're looking at this, the recommendation under number one for the realignment there, for the range alignment with the two and a half percent, is that folded into that for that three hundred and fifty thousand dollar total at the very bottom?
Yes, correct. That is all the market adjustments plus two and a half percent between nine and ten.
Okay, and that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars represents the addressing the totality of the positions that needed to be addressed as a result of the the study?
Correct, all the ones that are listed in the above table.
Are there any other positions outside of the ones that are on the table that would need to be adjusted?
Not to get us within market, not at this time. This would bring the entire nonrep schedule within market.
And then and then with the additional changes to steps nine and ten, that affect other positions that are not on here as well that are that are not on this list for adjustment as well? So you're also addressing and keeping keeping everybody else who is on there moving at the same at the same pace or similar pace to the other jobs on here?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, kind of where I'm falling is, I mean, I think the number is big, but it's, you know, honestly, I mean, I think, you know, we're going to have to address it at some point. We don't want to have done this study and shelved it and, you know, and then go through this sort of piecemeal process that I think has gotten us into this position in the in the first place. And so, you know, I think we have an opportunity here to you know, make a really significant down payment on changing the trajectory of our nonrep pay scale. This is consistent with the approach that we've taken with our representative employees. A lot of the same methodology and and thinking that we've put into it on the on the CBA negotiation side, we're able to apply here. And so I think there's a there's a real benefit to, you know, just being able to take this head on and get this nonrep scale moving in a more functional way from here on out. So I I'm comfortable moving forward with the recommendations that have been brought forward.
And what would be the next step?
Well, if I have, I mean, I can create the, if you want to see a prioritized list, Commissioner Netherland, I can definitely put that together. If if the other two Commissioners are wanting to move forward, then I think it would just be a matter of having it be on an action agenda, Mark, unless I'm missing something.
Yeah, I mean, we've provided them a lot of detail, right? And and I want to make sure that the Commissioners have the time to absorb this and look into it. And if you have questions that arise that we can provide you with documentation and show you the process that we went through. Because it is it is a big investment and it's something I want you to all feel comfortable with and and feel like you understand what we've gone through and what we're recommending. So if the Commission or individual Commissioners would like to have further conversations with Mary and or I, then we could absolutely have those conversations if you're not comfortable moving forward right away. And then I don't know in terms of timeline when we would want to do that. I definitely have to talk to both Jen and Mary like on the impacts associated with this. So as we move forward, what does that look like, right? So there's going to be a budgetary impact for sure. And then from a payroll perspective, it would it would most likely be day forward, right? So we define a specific time and then day forward from there. So there's no retro that would be calculated into it.
Yeah, I but go ahead.
I was just going to say, I guess, you know, Commissioner Netherland wanted a little bit more information on buying with that. There one, you know, you all want to have more discussions and that would give Mark some time to put together sort of the structural parts of this that matter from a process perspective. You know, so I'm I'm okay kind of going down that path and having all of that presented back to us. You know, but I just reiterate my position that I think, you know, we have the ability to address this in one fell swoop. And I think, you know, I think that's probably where I'm going to remain, but I'm good letting some of those conversations and process items kind of work out over the next couple of weeks or whatever you need, Mark.
Commissioner Netherland, do you?
Well, then also keeping in mind the other things that we have on the outside of this with the other employees within the county that we have to take all that into account as we move forward with these certain decisions that slow end it down just a little bit and and maybe break it down may be beneficial for many other reasons. Just something to consider, but I I there's nothing here that I disagree with, just how to get there maybe in timing.
Yeah, I I'm very comfortable with this and I agree with Commissioner, she did it. This is something that we've been addressing, you know, spot adjustments through the represented also. So I think I'm I'm very comfortable with this. And and I think it's it's been needed for, I don't know, when was the last time, thirty years ago? Something like that. So this is this has been needed and I'm super excited about it. So this is, this has been needed and I'm super excited about it.
All right. Well, I'll work with Mark and we'll get together some kind of process to recommendation to bring back and then Commissioner Netherland, I can, Mark and I can have an offline conversation and talk through some of the specifics and thought processes behind the data that's here.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, just thanks, thanks to you and your team. I think you guys have worked really hard on this and and thanks to Alex over at Cabbage Shop for all of the analysis. And I think that's a, I think that's an important message to send back to our our nonrep staff is that sure, we had a role to play in some of the review and certainly now with the deliberations, but having a independent third party review of these job descriptions and and the pay structure is, I think, been really beneficial to us and just appreciate all the effort that went into that.
Yeah, truly appreciated your time and our consultants' time also.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mark, do you have anything else for us or shall we move into Commissioner discussion?
And that's all I have for you.
And Commissioner Shuji?
Yeah, so commissioners, this is an issue or an item that we've been talking about quite a while in terms of some of DNR's decisions about what to include in their harvests and not include in their harvests. And so just asking the board to consider signing on to a letter to DNR regarding the Elk Lake properties up up near the Jefferson County line. And this is a, this is four hundred acres of trust land that that the DNR is considering putting into their carbon project and excluding them for future harvests and I think there needs to be a little bit more consideration of that decision going forward and just wanted to give Mason County an opportunity to weigh in on behalf of the junior districts and and us that would benefit from revisiting, including the parcels up at Elk Lake in the carbon project.
I love it. We you can no longer, we're no longer going to harvest your timber and give you your money on property that you have empowered us to watch over for you. I think that says enough right there because that whole thing is ridiculous.
I I read the letter and I was, I was super excited. I think this is the the right direction that we need, that we should go. There's, there's more to it than just the county. We have all of our special districts. And and they don't have a say. So I am they're not asking for our input. So I'm super excited.
We need to find out if we can pull it out if they try to force this on us. You know, fiduciary responsibility lies with them. This, they're not acting as our fiduciary if they do that. So I think we would have standing to do something about it. That's what I for me.
Yeah, hopefully the hopefully the board is responsive to us and rethinks it. But, you know, I I guess we'll just kind of keep our eyes on it and go from there. And I think I think we can put this on for next Tuesday. I don't think it needs to be moved tomorrow, so if everybody's good with it.
I'm good with that Tuesday.
I'm fine. I won't be here for Tuesday, but I'd sure like to add my signature.
So do we want to do it tomorrow?
If we could do it tomorrow, that would be great.
Let's do it tomorrow.
Okay.
I don't think, looking at everybody's face, I don't think a single one of us had a second question about it.
No.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I did have one thing was brought to my attention this morning that we have an AED machine and it was like, well, where is it? And so we went looking for it, found it. Does anyone else know where it's at? Does anyone else know how to use it?
Isn't it, is it in the break room?
No, it's out by the copier out in the lobby.
Oh, that's right. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that tells you how to use it.
Well, it does, but it helps, it helps to be trained on on it. And also having the Narcan available would be a great idea, too. So what what I thought I might ask Mark to do and and Mary and and others is to offer more trainings for for our first aid so that we can all get trained up. I just had my training last year. But it would be good for for all of us to to be up on that. You never know when something is going to happen. And so if we're ready for that, I think that that would be if we're ready and able to help, that would be cool.
Set it up for after one of our meetings. Let's just do it. You know, Mark, let's just make it happen then. You know, and I think I told you, I I think we should should be expanding our Narcan. I know Commissioner Shuji has made comments about it also, but I think I told you that they were telling me it was a hundred and twenty dollars a shop, but I went out and I renegotiated with a a ride aid in Olympia and I was able to get them at eighteen dollars. And they're willing to maybe even get even cheaper for us for mass purchase with a purchase order in the whole nine yards.
So Commissioner, I appreciate you saying that. So one of the things that we talked about last week at Board of Health was was looking at how we could use some of our treatment sales tax to help purchases for us and other school districts, business owners, just, you know, I think we need to get a surge of it back out into the community and we were talking about how we have a growing fund balance there, and I think this would be in line with the principles of the Treatment Sales Tax Fund. So that might be a, might be an opportunity where if we're in agreement that we move forward and try to purchase at that bulk level and and get some more resources out.
I think that'd be great.
I I've talked with them. I'd like to have a a specific training that I was trying to set up and I've got a lot of people willing to come to it, but I think we need to start doing it at all the different locations and and just make these happen. I think we talked about it before, as you know, now in all of North Mason, at each of the bars and and North Mason all have Narcan can now and do our best to explain it, but they're going to have, need to have a training that goes with it. But this is a time where we need to not just have it for the bar or whatever. This is a time where grandma and grandpa need to have one at home. And not just because their child is a drug addict, because they may not be, but they may be that day. And something else happens and they got into something they didn't know, or you know, their child like in in Olympia at the park or 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 it's time for mom and pop to have it or for grandma and grandpa to have it and then be the ones that are smart enough to get it done if something happens out there. But the only way we can do that is for mass education and the people are willing to come forward for something free and that's to get the Narcan and be able to take it with them. Imagine it could be one of your relatives or relatives that ended up getting saved by this next one.
Sounds like you have consensus, Mark.
I will work with with probably Mary and Nicole and Dave Wyndham.
I like it. Very cool. Maybe we can bring it up at the the meeting tomorrow also for the electives. Just add that short little burp and ask if they would be interested in the training as well.
We'll have a captive audience tomorrow.
All right. Do we have anything else?
Chair, move your chair.
All right, we're adjourned. See y'all later.
Take care.